I'd like to call the regular meeting of City Council for August fourteenth, two thousand twelve to order. Your call please.
Beagle, here. Byron is excused. Florrie?
Here.
Maltz is excused. Schuster?
Here.
Fox?
Here.
S'mora?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody here and could Mr. Danica and my old high school buddy believe us in place of religion's people?
The pleasure of the Legion, see you in America, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start our business as approve the approval of the agenda. entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Beagle, seconded by Councilmember Florrie to approve the consent agenda for the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carried. Same thing for the consent agenda. Motion by American Lieutenant Fox, seconded by Councilmember Beagle to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, we have some correspondence on the I O C.
I think we did, we've just addressed them with the consent.
Sure, but, okay, so we're all done there, do I have? Okay. Okay. At this moment, we would like to ask for any public comment on any items that cannot be handled during the regular business hours. Anybody would like to speak? Come up to the podium. Okay, scratch that. No, any unfinished business? At this time. Okay, new business, we have the American Legion presentation, it's supposed to be by Mr. Orban Klein, but it's going to be by Mr. Kim.
And Richard Cartwright. On behalf of American Legion, we would like to present you with a check, Commander Cartwright.
Hello. On behalf of American Legion Post Board ninety-one, I'd like to present a check to you for a thousand dollars for the six pool for April.
For our beverage table.
Thank you very much, very appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thanks for showing up, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is Roy okay?
Yeah, he had assist taken off today, we haven't heard back, so I don't know what time he had it, so. Kenny, thank you very much for putting up with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, the beverage table, like I said, was a thousand dollars and coupled with the softball tournament this year, which brought in fifteen hundred fifty dollars, so it's twenty five hundred fifty dollars for the pools. With those two on the same day of the event, so pretty pleased with that.
Thank you, Pete, for all your responsibility.
Enjoy it.
If you kept all their money, you might have made a minimum wage.
Yeah, yeah.
I doubt it.
Yeah, yeah, right. I don't get paid for working, do I? Okay. So at this time, we're gonna go to item B, discuss property maintenance orders. Continuation, I guess?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mark in a minute, but at the last meeting, we approved moving forward to prepare a first reading of property maintenance ordinance. And as Mark and I worked on it, we discovered some issues that just needed some further discussion and that, turn it over to Mark.
Just briefly, we have been working on the ordinance and I drafted an ordinance to adopt by reference the International Property Maintenance Code. And when we started this, the code was of two thousand nine, well, they've come out with a two thousand twelve code. And they do so every three years, so I've been in contact with the, sort of the Michigan representative of the, the people who publish this code and, you know, they recommend adopting the most current versions, you're not always playing catch-up. And then they, they update it every three years, and so their recommendation is to have that be part of our regular legislative ordinance maintenance. So the problem is, is that the ordinances, excuse me, the property maintenance codes are not easily accessible online. You know, they want you to buy them, so I've just ordered the two thousand twelve code. And also, you know, a side-by-side comparison that will tell us what changes have been made, because there are some blanks in the model ordinance that you have to fill in and complete, so, you know, that is forthcoming. I, I agree with the recommendation, I don't think it makes sense to adopt a two thousand, an older version of the code. You know, I just sent that recommendation to Brian today and we haven't had a chance to get our building inspector to chime in on that recommendation. Because I frankly, I don't know how many of the municipalities and townships that he works with have adopted the two thousand twelve version yet. But I'm told, since the sample summary, that we could use the same for two thousand nine or two thousand twelve, I don't expect there to be a lot of substantive changes. But I do think it's important for him to chime in on that. We did get some feedback to the, to the adoption of the two thousand nine, and I certainly welcome that. I'm gonna get the code and make it available to Brian, so if anybody wants to look at the two thousand twelve version, they can do that. Brian spoke to the police chief and recommended that we, even though we have an inoperable vehicle component to our city ordinance, that, that it would be helpful if we included rather than deleted the, that provision out of the International Property Maintenance Code to help on enforcement. We got some feedback originally from Bert Gale as far as who should be the code official as defined under the Property Maintenance Code for enforcement. And under our current ordinance scheme right now, the city manager, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, I think appoints the, hires the building official. You know, the building inspector and the salary set and everything like that. And so rather than have the fire chief and the police chief and, you know, the electrical inspector and the mechanical inspector and all these people running around with this ability to issue citations, which is something that was suggested by Bert Gale. So that, you know, it's my thinking that that decision-making should rest with our city manager and our building inspector. They have the authority to empower, you know, and appoint, designate or deputize people and say, you know, chief, go out and look at this situation. Certainly, the fire chief should be on that list of people that could enforce by, by having that delegated to them. But rather than have, you know, a whole array of people that could, one person could say, you know, I'm looking, look at this situation on this piece of property. You know, I think it should all be, all the information should be funneled back to the city manager and the building inspector. And then they could in turn say, chief, go take a look at this, you know, electrical, go take a look at that. And then have the citations really, you know, centralized, or violations or the notices with the people that are empowered under our ordinances to make those decisions. I think that's about it in terms of the sharing. My, my hope was to have a lot, you know, a draft ordinance for you tonight to look at and review, maybe not as a first reading. I've drafted it, but it's got the two thousand nine, so rather than put that out there, I wanna see what two thousand twelve says to see if there's any other tweaking. And then we can have a more substantive conversation on the, on the detail of it. Is that?
I think so, and I think as we prepared the ordinance and some of the feedback we got, there were a couple sections in the Property Maintenance Code that had, you know, very, addressed very minor things that we agreed probably should not necessarily be a part of our combs. We're looking into being able to strike certain things, like for instance, we talked about at the last meeting, one of them was, you know, everybody should have an insect screen on their window, and that, you know, that's obviously not something that we're going to enforce. So to the ability, we can strike those from the code, there's a couple, a couple of little things that we'll look at and try to delete.
What I've seen for the most part, just as, just as sort of a general, is that people who have adopted the code, adopted for uniformity without modification, except instances where they have their own separate ordinance dealing with, you know,
weeds.
weeds or rental properties or, you know, some, their own property maintenance, you know, some specific section. So, you know, the model, the International Property Maintenance Code does have some fill-in-the-blank provisions in terms of, you know, if you gotta maintain certain temperatures inside and eating and residential, what period of time is it from? Is it from April till, you know, October till April, October fifteenth till May fifteenth? I mean, there's, there's some variation, insect screens was another. And, and what, and also what kind of fine scheme, 'cause I say scheme, I shouldn't say scheme. You know, a fine schedule should be set, you know, for violation for a first offense, you know, second offense, those kinds of things. So I think that's, that's really the kind of policy statement that the council will chime in on, you know. If, if something isn't cured, you know, is it, is it gonna be a hundred dollars for the first offense, twenty-five dollars, is it gonna be five hundred dollars or somewhere? So, you know, this, and it doesn't really, it doesn't really specify minor versus major offenses. So if someone's violating it, you send them a notice and they haven't cured it, you know, what is the, what is the penalty gonna be for that, the scheduled fines? In conjunction with this, you'll also have, you know, the civil infraction ordinance, and then we'll have another ordinance just adopting all of the, all of the state codes that are in effect now under the State Construction Code. We still make reference to Boca, which is the old name for this International Property Maintenance Code. So we're, you're gonna get three, when we get this package put together, you'll have three component parts to it. So there's a lot of work on this. So once, once the two thousand twelve is available, everybody can, you know, you know, Brian will let you know and then, and you know, if anybody wants to spend the time to look at some of those issues, they can, you know, let Brian write it down, and we'll try and build those in, at least build an agenda for conversation.
Does anybody have any questions?
I've got somebody saying, on the phone, one, six hundred three South Main Street. It's a neighborhood, as far as the personal, forget, forget, you can go to the past life place, you can live next door to that place, you don't wanna live there. Got an old car for thirty dollars, for a car sitting driveway, that's been doing it six months, for all parts. So that would be on the list of complaints, I guess. Someone's saying, I can do anything, just don't waste your time. As with, I don't know, there's a question, city says I've been in city, I believe it's seventy-seven.
We've had one inoperable vehicle matter that I'm aware of, over the time that I've been.
Well, please, I know, while we can record it, we didn't make right by it, I see, and we don't have to report it. You know, please do, and I'll make a good luck in the work, I think.
We can, we'll, we'll take a look at, at those, that's, that's the first that I'm aware of. I know that there's some issues down there, but I didn't know it was from, I can have the chief look at the inoperable vehicles, but as far as some of the other things, that's what we're trying to address with the Property Maintenance Code.
Right, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul.
I was pleased to see that even though we're working on this, in the police report, that the chief did go out to a property this last week and put a notice on about the inoperable vehicles, so.
Um, with the, with the International Property Maintenance Code, I guess, with reading the old one, the, the only thing I guess I really don't like about it are the minor things, some of the, when it comes to peeling or cracking paint and, I mean, I don't know, you know, you said you could set it up differently, like, you know, maybe not necessarily a fine, and it sounds like it's kinda hard to delete something out of there. If you could set it up like, I mean, I guess my fear is if you, if you go and somebody has an inoperable vehicle or if their house is obviously unsafe, and you start going, trying to remedy that, you know, that they come back and, I guess, just to, to me, just make a point, trying to, you know, start filing complaints against, you know, like, well, my neighbor, you know, his insect screens or his windows or, you know, just, I guess, you know, somebody having an issue with them, with us not enforcing the whole thing, not just picking and choosing, you know, what we like out of, you know, and somebody kinda coming back and doing that, you know, and asking us why we're not enforcing the whole thing when we're just kinda picking, feeling like they're sealed out, so.
But it's certainly, it's certainly a possibility, I mean, we deal with that now, I mean, the things that we do enforce, we do hear that, you know, whenever I write a junk letter, somebody will say, well, yeah, but this person parks in the street overnight, we don't give them a ticket. Or, you know, the people who give a ticket for parking in the street overnight, they say, well, that person's had junk in their yard for, forever. So I think, you know, first, I, I think we have to have the, the correct tools to enforce certain things. And then, second of all, there's, you know, policy decisions on how you systematically enforce things. Because I, I think hearing what council has said, you know, they don't want just kind of willy-nilly enforcement and they don't want overbearing enforcement to where we're to a police state, but there are specific issues that the city would like to, to focus on and get cleaned up. Inoperable vehicles have always been, you know, a major source of complaint, junk on the property has been a complaint. And then, of course, dilapidated housing that presents a, you know, health or safety risk or just a, you know, major blight. You know, those are issues, because obviously, we're, we're not set up to, we're not gonna be able to enforce the whole, you know.
Everything in there is enforceable. I mean, maybe get a ticket, but there's some crazy stuff in there.
I, I guess. There's real crazy stuff in there. I mean, it's not like, you know, to be kind of painful to delete it, I mean, if you did leave something in there, would it be, I mean, could you, I guess, set it up like, well, if somebody's, hates feeling, we're gonna send them a letter. And I guess, that'd be the, would be extent of the enforcement for that part of the, the code? I mean, could you just stop it there instead of, you know, without there being any real, I guess, action beyond that?
What that would entail, and I've not seen anybody do that, is to classify or try to classify every conceivable violation. And make it major or minor, you know, maybe first or second, there's, there's a, is a possibility, you know, if they don't, if he, then, you know, if they don't respond to the first and, you know, after the second violation. But then, then you get into the issue of if it's a pretty egregious or significant, you know, and you get, it used to be like with dog bites, you got the first bite free until you know the, until you know the dog was vicious, and that doesn't work, you know, because it's the first victim. So, you know, I don't know how you, you build that into it. So I think it's more, and it's part of the reason that I, I, I thought it was beneficial not to spread the decision-making too far. Because if you got somebody that's just so, you know, it, it, it's sort of a strict liability, they see every violation as a violation, they're gonna ticket it. Then, you know, I think it's better to come back to the building inspector who is accountable to city manager, and the city manager is accountable to council. So they will implement your decisions on how you want the policy and the code enforced. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't know if, if you wanna spend the time trying to, trying to delineate, you know, that this is a, this is a first offense and this is, you know, this is a free pass or, you know.
I think it's just tough, I mean, if you wanna adopt something that big and that broad, you know, and say we're gonna pick and choose what we're gonna enforce out of that. You know, I guess, and if we're gonna, well, we're not gonna enforce that, I guess, I don't see the point of passing.
But I think, excuse me, I think that's the case in every, in every code. You, you, you got the electrical code, you got the mechanical code, I mean, you've got all the codes that apply anyways. So I, I think that's probably the case in most codes that you're dealing with.
As I say, the International Property Maintenance Code is already adopted by the Michigan Building Code. So there's already, a lot of people argue it's already enforceable. Through our discussions, feel like it's, you know, a more fair way, I think, to specifically adopt it rather than having, you know, it's adopted by reference to part of Michigan Building Code. So that, you know, people understand this is, you know, a part of it, because, but there's, I mean, there's literally, I mean, you, you could, you could give a citation to every house in the city, to the building, the old, the electrical code or the plumbing code, it just is.
Yeah, the energy code, I mean, we, we've got a lot of codes that are part of our State Construction Code, I mean, it's, so.
But I think, you know, I think definitely fair points. We're not making a statement that, oh, well, you know, we're not gonna force A, B, and C, we're only gonna enforce D. But at the same point, you intuitively make policy decisions of what is a problem in, in town and, you know, what's.
Um, I got a little talking to complain here. If you continually get complaints from stupid stuff, you're gonna have to enforce it.
Well, then we enforce it. Back to yours, you say you don't want it, you don't want this, not to be enforced every little thing?
Well, no, I want it.
No, I'm serious.
There's crazy stuff in there.
Well, yeah, I don't want.
Feeling pain if somebody.
Well, I think feeling pain is something that, I don't think we really, really go after.
Okay, there's stuff in here that people aren't, if anybody ever reads this and wants to do any work on their house, they're never gonna get a permit because there's some crazy stuff in there.
Yeah, it's just our.
Like you gotta have a bathroom on every floor that have a bedroom, well, there are a lot of houses in town that don't. You know, and if, if I wanted to redo my bath or bedrooms, if I read this first, I'd never get a permit. Because now I gotta spend more money and put a bathroom up there. I mean, it, I mean, that's the kind of crazy stuff that's in there. I can see it going the other way too, you know, I mean, I'm just not gonna get a permit, they're gonna say, because now I gotta spend another dollar more money for a bathroom.
This, this doesn't have anything to do with the permit. You still have to follow.
Yeah, but if you read this, you gotta have a bathroom on every floor that you have a bedroom. That's one of the codes in there. So that tells me that if you get a permit to redo your bedroom, and you're upstairs and you don't have a bathroom, they're gonna tell you, you gotta have a bathroom. Am I right?
But isn't that part of the permit process? I mean, if you, if you're gonna pull an electric per- permit and you're, and you've got, you know, you know, a service that's not up to code, you, you gotta bring.
I understand.
Up to code. You know, what may, what might, what might make sense is for the actual discussion, if you wanna have our building inspector, when we're introducing it, you know, as part of that council meeting and conversation, to, you know, to, to chime in, it might be, I mean, to address some of these enforcement kinds of issues. That might make sense.
Does that define that as, would it say just a commode and a sink and a shower and a bathtub or would say?
I don't, I repeat, I, I shouldn't know how you like to do it, but, you know.
I have a little.
If you, if you have bedrooms on a floor, then you need a restroom on that floor. And I know there are a lot of houses in town, and they're, I mean, they're not gonna come looking. I understand that, but I understand that also, if you wanna get a permit to do some work in the house, that's when you're gonna see these violations. The only inspector's gonna go, oh, you don't have a bathroom, you need to put a bathroom. And I mean, how are we gonna go with this thing? There is a lot of crazy stuff.
Just on that point, must somebody, I'm just looking at plumbing facilities and fixture requirements, I don't know where you read that, Randy. And I don't know it that well in detail, but it says, every dwelling unit shall contain its own bathtub or shower, lavatory, water closet, kitchen sink, which should be maintained in sanitary, safe working condition. The lavatory should be placed in the same room as the water closet, located in close proximity to the door leading directly into the room in which water closet is located. Kitchen sink shall not be used as a substitute for the required lavatory. Rooming houses, one water closet, lab and bathtub for each four rooming units, different for hotels, different for employee facilities. And, so, I don't know.
This, I mean, this, the, the Property Maintenance Code is, I don't think it, I don't think it governs, there's separate building codes. So it depends on, there's subjects.
Then it's an active, everything in here is enforceable, you use the shit house.
Well, I mean, yes, but I, I don't see where, I don't see where you're, where you get that, it's gotta be on the same floor. I mean, with, with any building code, when you pull a permit, it's subject to certain rules.
True, I understand.
It, there's a lot of houses that aren't up to code, the building inspector's gonna go in and say, well, you're not addressing this, you're only, you know, you're putting in a new dishwasher, so you don't have to put in a new bathroom. But if you're, if you're remodeling your house, they may say, well, you have, now you have to, you know, your, the word rises to the level where you have to bring it up to code and install a certain amount of plugs or, or a bathroom on this floor or whatever. So the, the Property Maintenance Code, I don't think gets into things like that, it's more out of the safety, you know, or property maintenance type issues. You know, you have the, the building and the mechanical and the electrical code, I mean, they all stand on their, on their own. And those have all been standardized, I mean, everybody has the same building code, so.
I kinda care to see that myself, but.
On the bathroom issue?
Aren't the objectives of codes to bring stuff up to code and if it requires that, and we know that, isn't that the objective? That it's like, whatever you add on to your house or whatever you bring something up to a different code, that's the law.
Yeah, you're, you're usually grandfathered until that point in time when you wanna, wanna get a permit.
Just like your house, you live in it for forty years, and, and you sell it, when it comes up to the property director, same.
As far as, I mean, coming up, having to comply with that building code at that time, I don't think upon sale.
No, no, I'm talking about taxes. I'm saying, you live in that house for forty years, if you're, you're valued.
Oh, the uncapping?
That's what I'm saying, it's the same example, I'm using that as an example.
Okay, yeah.
When you bring your house, you wanna add to it, you gotta bring it up to what's code at that time. And isn't that what we're talking about here? Are you talking about, Randy, if you're gonna put that in, if that's the code, then that's the law. I mean, that's understood, if you're gonna, you're going to, I mean, if that's what it says, I don't know, I haven't read it. If that's what it says, I mean, when you build, and you add, you add to your house, it could have been there since eighteen ninety, and when you bring it up, when you, you gotta come up to code, if that's the code, then you understand that going in. I'm making sense here, I don't make. I mean, when you do that, you, you understand that that's what you have to do, you're remodeling your house, you have to bring it up to code.
There's, there's different, I mean, there's different levels.
Right, right.
If you're only, if you're remodeling a kitchen, you're not, you don't have to bring in your whole house up to code.
No, 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 no.
But if you're. But yeah, if you're doing.
If you're adding, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, what Randy's alluding to, if you're, if you're gonna put two or three more bedrooms, you gotta put a, a bathroom, right? That's what you're saying. Well, if that's the code, then you know that going in, right?
So where's the effort?
You do it through that.
I did find, it's on page eighteen.
Is it?
What's that?
I haven't read it yet. So, four oh four point four point three, water closet accessibility, every bedroom shall have access to at least one water closet and one lavatory without passing through another bedroom, every bedroom in a dwelling unit shall have access to at least one water closet and lavatory located in the same story as a bedroom or an adjacent story.
So that means it doesn't have to be on the same floor? Yeah, I mean, so if you got, you, you don't have to, if you got a bedroom on a, a second floor, you can have the, the, the bathroom on the main floor or vice versa. So it doesn't have to be on the same floor?
It's the same floor.
So it doesn't have, yeah, it's the same floor?
Adjacent.
In the location, in the same story as a bedroom or an adjacent story.
Adjacent. Or an adjacent store.
So it can be downstairs, all upstairs, whichever, so that's a moot point, right?
I think that, the, I think that there, there is some, uh, there are some health and safety things in here that are maybe geared towards, uh, you know, renters, um.
And they're part of it to, to rent.
Right, no question.
And the, the, so somebody's not gonna rent out, rent to somebody, a room who does, that doesn't have access to a bathroom or.
Right, yeah. Right. Right, which wouldn't make sense.
Uh, sanitary.
Like, but different rules.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Any else? Anything else, Frank? Do that? Some more discussion? Mark, any else?
No, but I think that's the kind of fruitful conversation that we're, uh, to just thresh it out, and so I'm appreciative of the feedback.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is we're gonna adopt it, and then we can't pick and choose, we're just gonna decide what we're gonna be enforcing? Is that what you're saying?
I think that, I think from a policy standpoint, it makes sense, so that if we've got a building inspector that's enforcing the International Property Maintenance Code and a lot of different jurisdictions, that there'd be some uniformity in, in terms of what the rules are. And there are some, i- i- in the adoption, there are some, um, uh, dates and, and fines and those kinds of things, I mean, the fine structure's something that we need to look at. We have a weed ordinance, so, you know, we're used to enforcing our weed ordinance, so, you know, we, we can rely upon our existing ordinances to, to do some of these things. And so, you know, those sections are commonly deleted in other, you know, other municipalities, so I, I don't have any problem with that. I think where, where you get into an issue is, is, is we, we try and legislate what's major and minor, and, you know, we cut out this so that, you know, if you got, tho- those provisions also apply to, um, restaurants and things like that, so if you've got, you know, things that become health issues, so, you know, I, I would think that it makes sense to, for the most part, adopt the uniform code, uh, except where we have other, uh, ordinances that support it, that we're more comfortable with. Make some decisions and not try and go through with a scalpel and, you know, take this out, take that, 'cause you, you know, I think it's hand in glove, I think a lot of it fits together. And so if you've got somebody that's used to enforcing it, you might, they might as well be familiar with it rather than have to go back and say, oh, gosh, you know, we don't have this rule, but the, you know, I, I'm just the, I'm just a scripter, I mean, I, I do what you tell me to do in terms of drafting, I'm just trying to make it uniform and consistent. I think that's, that makes the best policy sense. And then leave it to the person that you authorized to enforce it, your city manager and your building inspector, to follow your wishes. And I think that's, I think that makes the most sense.
I, I, I just think it's tough, like, obviously, you know, if you have a house that's unsafe or, you know, it's not easy problem, and you start trying to deal with it. And, uh, you know, they come back and say, you know, driving on my house or anybody else's house, and like, you have a bunch of chip paint in, uh, in section three oh four point two, you know, you got cracked paint, and, well, I wanna tell that, that, you know, or, you know, he just drives through the house or through the mirrors and starts picking things. And, uh, and our, you know, I guess our answer would be like, just kinda shrug our shoulders, well, we're not gonna force that, we're not gonna, you know. I, I know you said it's kinda tough, but I think there should be some bad distinction between a dilapidated, doesn't say the house, and somebody who's, of course, who needs paint, you know? That's just my thoughts.
So you don't think enforcement could do that, make different?
Well, I don't like that, I mean, if you're just like, you know, we're like, we have an inspector, he's gonna decide, well, we're not gonna, you know, that's what it sounds like, we're not gonna force it, it's in here, but we're not gonna force it.
Chip paint as opposed to a dilapidated house?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I know you're trying to pass one thing uniformly, it, it's a lot easier, but I know, it, it's, it's hard for me to agree to do something that's that broad. You know, where there's no distinction between the two, and I'm not, we're gonna basically tell people our policies would be, enforce certain things and not other parts of them. I guess that's, that's the challenge I have, and, you know, it's, I'm trying to figure out something, something, I guess, that makes all versus.
I take it as that we're not, not gonna enforce some things, we're gonna deal with the most devastating things first, and that's the city's priority, is to deal with those things first.
Yeah, but what if it's complaint driven like Randy's saying, like, you know, this, you know, whoever can file a complaint, you know, they can, you know, make issues out of what they want issues out of, you know, it's, that's, I guess that's my, that's my fear, you know?
Is it a hundred percent complaint driven, or?
I don't know.
I mean, the city manager can go around and see, you know, what's.
Well, right, right now, most of our stuff is, you know, other than weeds or, not really weeds, almost everything is complaint driven, because we don't. I mean, we really don't have a mechanism for enforcing things, this, you know, this gives us some tools. As I say, I, I, I would imagine that it's still gonna be primarily, uh, to some degree, it'll be complaint driven, because we don't have a full-time code enforcer. Um, you know, but there are obvious, at, at, when we first started talking about this, there are obvious things that council has stated. And with complaints, there, you know, we, we don't get a lot of complaints, we don't get a lot of nitpicky complaints, there, there's definitely a pattern for certain things, you know, certain properties or, you know, junk in property or that type of thing, um, and then, and, you know, Derek's examples, I think they do happen to some degree now, uh, as I say, when we take the cars for parking in the street overnight, a lot of times they complain and say, well, I, you know, I got a ticket for this, yeah, my neighbor has been doing this. My neighbor burns trash at night, and nobody ever, nobody ever does anything. You know, we're, we are a small city, we, we have a small staff, but, uh, we're not set up to do constant enforcement, so, you know, we do have to rely on some complaint driven things. But having the tools to do it, I think is, I think it'll clear up a lot of problems, and I don't think it would benefit us to have, you know, fifty angry residents in here saying, I got a ticket for chip paint, oh, I got a ticket for not having a screen in, uh, you know, that type of thing. So I, I, I think you're right, Jennifer, the, I think the point is that we're not saying we're not gonna enforce it, but we will have the tools to enforce the, the patterns of problems or things that, you know, council has identified as, as systematic problems that are citywide.
I can just say, well, you know, it's a, it's a real difficult issue on any sort of rule of law, I mean, are you gonna, are you gonna, um, the speed limit's twenty-five, are you gonna give a ticket to everybody that's going twenty-six? You know, or is there a certain amount of discretion that's applied, I mean, you still have to have a standard, I think, and then, and then, whether it's complaint driven or observed in the field or as a result of some petition, I mean, then I think that you'll know it when you see it, and, and, and it's not like the city of East Lansing that has a whole court enforcement team that drive it around, you know, because of the rental prob- property issues, and they're, they're out there, you know, looking for the, uh, violations, it's revenue based and.
And I, I don't think this is that big of a deviation from what we have had in the past, I mean, we had the Boca construction codes, which just, which just don't exist anymore, and, and our ordinance has just have never been, you know, kept up, and in terms of, and right now, if we have problems, it, it's a very expensive thing to try to deal with, um. You know, if, if we, if we have a major issue, which we do have some in, in town, we do have, uh, you know, we do have houses that are overrun with raccoons or cats or, uh, which cause a health and safety issue, and I understand the pri- private property rights argument, but if you live next door to that and your kids are at risk or you, your property values plummet because you're next door to something like that, then it does affect you and you deal with, and we, we have several of those issues in town, I mean, throughout town. But for us to try to address those right now under our current ordinance, ordinance is, it's an expensive and timely process.
Any other comments, the service? Do not. Give your, uh, bid test and award crack ceiling project.
Each year, we put out a bid for, uh, crack sealing, um, and, uh, this year, the bull bidder was Wolverine Seal Coating, uh, for the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Just like last year, their, their bid was quite a bit lower than the other three. Rob, our DPW director, had a meeting with them and just made sure and clarified what their expectations were, what our expectations were. They said, yep, they fully understand, uh, and their bid stands, and, and they understand, uh, what we're expecting, so. I don't have a problem with the disparity in bids, uh, mainly because Skedeller and, and Farner, they are big, big operations, so the fact that their bid would be pretty high does not surprise me, and a pavement restoration, uh, who hadn't bid last year, um, it has been more than double this year. And I called him, uh, he called me to just ask how the bids came out, and I just said, well, you, you know, you were way out of the ballpark, and he said, well, well, we're busy, and I just threw a number at it and, you know, hoped that I got it, so he really didn't put in any time on it, but, uh, Wolverine Seal Coating, they did drive all over the streets, so I feel pretty comfortable with, uh, with their bid, and we'll, of course, review their work, and, um, the only change is we, we had Commercial Drive on there, that, that street is really too far gone. Um, so, and, and instead of Commercial Drive, we're gonna do, uh, Oak Street and Washburn, um, and crack seal doors instead. And Chile will provide a treasurer certification for this as well.
Any questions?
Is there any way to talk how many miles it is? I know it went by route, but.
Um, I, I could probably calculate that for you, but, uh.
That's okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, not off the top of my head, but I think we could, we could figure it out.
Okay. That's right.
One thing is we buy, we've kept up on this pretty good for, I think, five, five years now, and we're, we're to the point now where we, when we put it out to bid, it's pretty much every street that can be crack sealed, uh, 'cause when we first started, we, you know, started with, you know, certain streets and kept building each year, so now, we pretty much can do all the streets, um, because there's less, obviously, less cracks and touching up old cracks, uh, that can be done. A lot of the streets that we don't do, uh, are too far deteriorated, so we just try to ride those out. Um, the ideal with crack sealing is you try to preserve your good roads and keep water from getting in the cracks and expanding, and I think it's worked quite well for the city.
When will this take place?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to award the crack sealing bid to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Schuster, seconded by council member Beagle, to approve the bid to Wolverine for a crack sealing project. Any discussion? No discussion, all favor by, signify by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no. Now we have the Ella Leslie for MDA fundraiser, which on here it says September twenty-eighth, but I guess that's been, uh, is a conflict with something else homecoming, I believe you said. So we can approve it or, and, uh, with a, just a later date stipulation. So, and a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the LFD MDA fundraiser, uh, date to be, uh.
Start it.
I'll start.
Motion by council member Beagle, seconded by council member Flurry, to approve the LFD MDA fundraiser for a date to be turned later. Any questions on the motion, any discussion? No discussion, all favor seen by, by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no, motion carried for the fundraiser.
Aye.
Now, uh, next item is approve the White Pine Academy five K race for Friday, September twenty-first, two thousand twelve, six thirty P M.
Uh, I think this is either the second or third annual race that they've had, and, uh, I think it's a relative in your packet. Um, they, they, yeah, they wanted to change the date to Friday night, um, they don't need any road closures, but this will have stopping guard at these, at these sections.
See, I thought they, they had a Sunday, that's what I, I said, I looked at it, I thought it was Sunday, okay.
Yeah, they changed it, I'm not, I'm not sure why, I think. Jared, Jared told me, I'm just forgetting what it's.
Can I provide the appropriate costing people that will help them?
Yes.
Just hopefully, like, you know, right?
Volunteers. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the White Pine Academy five K race.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Flurry, seconded by council member Schuster, to approve the White Pine Academy five K race for Friday, September twenty-first, two thousand twelve. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all favor by, all favor seen by, by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no, motion carried.
Aye.
Now we need to appoint the election commission for November sixth, two thousand twelve elec- election.
Uh, it's just, just formal, it's the, formal, you gotta be a particular election, it seemed like we just did it, but.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Fair.
I think everybody understands the motion, so if you wanna get a motion.
I'll get it.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Beagle, seconded by Mayor Coach John Fox, to approve the election committee as stated for election November sixth, two thousand twelve. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all favor seen by, by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no. Now we have Chia, Michael, the Fall Festival, city manager, let's take this.
Um, I just, looking back through our previous, uh, council minutes, uh, I realize I would never have approved, uh, the Fall Festival for September eighth. So that's something that, uh, probably would be good to do, um, basically, uh, it'll be all day, September eighth, um, we'll have a parade in the morning, um, there's a pancake breakfast, power show, um, craft show, entertainment, uh, at the tent during the day, and then all beer tent at night. Um, kids games and playable toys.
So, we're asking for a street closure from, uh, Main Street, uh, from Bellevue to, uh, Bill Street going south this time. And also Commercial Drive, um, where we're gonna have the car show in the downtown area and then wrap around here in Commercial Drive. Uh, and then kids games, bouncy houses and that type of thing going south on South Main Street, uh, in Marni, um, so.
And a big tent.
And a big tent, uh, Commercial Drive, so that the road closure would basically be from seven A M. to, uh, about five P M. on Saturday, uh, with the exception of Commercial Drive, which will obviously be closed from, uh, Friday through Sunday. A little bit tenting there.
Do I assume permanently from main to the alley, so that the alley remains open?
Yes.
Any questions? Any motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the fall festival with the appropriate street closures.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Schuster, seconded by Councilmember Beagle to approve the fall festival with all the closures. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no, motion carried. Committee reports, we'll start with Councilmember Beagle.
Committee reports, I, um, I do know that due to the weather, the, um, the annual crack sales, the annual sales, like, we can roll it down. Huge participation again with over a hundred sales, um, but because of the, the bad weather, not as many people came into town, local businesses didn't do quite as well. But I still think it was a, an excellent weekend and, um, look forward to helping redo it next year.
It's not a flurry, anything?
No, it's the, uh, thanks for, uh, for not a good factor, it's, it's, it's down there. A lot of people took their enjoying, so. Thank you. Thank you, Beagle.
Uh, just a point of information, um, a, a motion for consideration was filed by Wolverine, uh, and was considered denied by the Michigan Supreme Court on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve. So, this will be my second final report on that, uh, on that matter. Is it?
It's it.
Should be the final final.
Should be the final final.
One final again.
Thank you. I, uh, just to, uh, call with Derek on the Mac, or we put on the Mac, uh, we pretty much broke even as far as money, but we had more teams, but, you know, we didn't get as many sponsors. Um, and, uh, plus some of the stuff that I had to do, uh, went up in pricing, so. But all in all, uh, again, the only negative comment I got, I got a call from somebody in the one hundred block of Main where there was a little bit of trash, uh, by the, in front of their house in the street, which actually I picked it up myself and I was picking up other stuff late around in the evening. But he was concerned about the parking, um, getting in his drive, which I told him that for next year I will, uh, get with the chief and the police department, hopefully monitor that a little bit better. He wasn't extremely upset, but just had some concerns, which, which are okay. But everything else, uh, I heard, and it was positive, that's totally negative I've heard, thing I've heard since it's been down here. So, I thought it was, it was good, like, the ball tournament and the street dance went well as usual. I did attend the, my first Michigan Association of Mayors conference last week in Traverse City, which was, I had a meeting with the city manager yesterday and highlighted some of the topics from vacant land, uh, foreclosures to, uh, uh, the M M L's getting into selling gas. So, Brian's looking into that, cutting our costs, they're starting to do that for municipalities, which is another thing that, that M M L's helping with the communities. But the conference was very well run, our, the president of the association, she's on the ball, and I met, there might have been forty or fifty mayors there and then made some good, some good friends there and, uh, it was just a good time and a lot of networking as usual, but very well worth it. I, I learned a lot and so, I, it's just, I can't say enough about my first, uh, association meeting, it was just my wow. That's all I have. Right?
Um, several things, uh, just one, um, we're, uh, approaching our first, well, not our first, but another open house for completed apartments in our downtown, um, the one thirty-nine and one forty-nine Main Street, um, Chris Fuller and the Net Fuller, uh, will be having an open house next Tuesday from four P M. to six P M. Uh, so hopefully you'll be able to come out and, and, uh, see the new apartments. And I think that they already have all of them rented out, uh, so it really goes to show that this grant program has been, um, really a good thing for the city because there is a need for affordable housing and it's a good way to get the, um, get those upstairs renovated, cause otherwise it's, uh, pretty cost prohibitive. Um, I don't know if you've been down to Russell Park, you'll see that we completed the pavilion, uh, which was a lo- long, long process, longer than what we had thought, uh, and due to being shorthanded at the, um, DPW, our guys were initially gonna build it, um, we ended up contracting with the Leach, with Leach and Sons, um, they built it for us, uh, we, we assisted in a lot of ways. Um, uh, but we still, um, came in right about at the budget, um, for the grant, so it turned out pretty good. Uh, the trash R F P., um, is out, uh, we had a, a bidder's meeting last week. Uh, six interested vendors showed up, um, had a lot of good questions about our R F P. Um, the feedback I received had been, you know, mostly just clarification questions, um, uh, for the most part, they thought it was, uh, pretty well put together R F P., um, a couple of things in it, they said, you know, they hadn't seen before. And, and there were certainly, I think, if we, if we decide and get the bids back and if we decide to go that route, there'll be some areas for negotiation, we go for service agreements, uh, you know, a couple of comments were, um, you know, the, we put in the R F P., like, the hours of operation, they say, you know, what happens if we get an equipment failure or something like that. So, some of those are very small things. Another one was, uh, they thought that the, um, the insurance, uh, umbrella for overall insurance was a little bit high. They didn't have a problem with most of the general insurances, but then there was like an overall umbrella. So, some of those things we can relook at, um, but for the most part, I think we'll hopefully get back some, some good bids and have some information to chew on and make some decisions. Um, our, our master planning process is, is moving along. The, the, um, the planner that we hired had been putting together background information and basically waiting till September to, uh, it's so hard to plan a meeting in the summer, um, so basically doing a lot of the upfront work right now during the summer and probably have a meeting in September, uh, to start that in earnest. Um, do have news on the pool grant, uh, unfortunate news. Um, we, we received a letter last week, um, saying that, you know, we still had to submit some more information in order to get, uh, the federal go-ahead on our grant. And, um, one of those pieces of information was a full set of plans. Uh, so I called the state and said, well, you have told us that we could not expend any money on this project until it was approved at the federal level. And they said, oh, yeah, but you need to have plans in order to go ahead, we wouldn't have told you that. So, um, I forwarded them the email that they sent me where I specifically asked them, but what about plans? Can't we get started on plans so we can be ready to go? And they said, no, absolutely not, we cannot spend money on plans. So, they basically said, well, our mistake. So, that basically caused us six months of time that we could have been working on it, um, because of, you know, and like I say, I mean, it sounded odd to me, which is why I, you know, asked them specifically, you know, can we get started on plans? And they told us, no, you cannot expend any money on this project at all or else you risk losing your grant. So, um, we will be getting started on that, that soon, I don't think. In the grand scheme of things, I don't think it's a, a huge deal. I think it would have been very tough to get everything done before the pool opened for this year. Um, and so we still had the whole winter, it just, I think it just would have, I mean, it just would have been better than be getting started on it, uh, earlier, um, and keep some momentum going on that project. Uh, the wastewater project is going very well, uh, they completed the sewer intercept on Washburn. Um, the building is going up at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, and they will probably start on the Washington Street List Station probably in about thirty days or a month. Um, and the water iron removal plant and meter project will be, uh, beginning on August twentieth. Um, so, and we are looking to schedule a couple of public meetings regarding the water meter project to help inform the community and, um, they will probably get started before we have those meetings, but it will primarily be, uh, commercial, um, properties. But, uh, so before we get into the residences, we'll be looking at that public meeting and hopefully, hopefully explain what's going on. And so far, I mean, the feedback has been very positive on that, uh, only one or two negative people who, you know, say that what, what happened stolen meter in their house or their business, so. That's about it. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Beagle, by Councilmember Flurry to adjourn, discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, as opposed to say no. You the adjourn?
You're all right, Cherry, you got all that.